Here, Mike.
Go ahead.
Eric.
Here.
John.
Here.
Eric, John, what do you think?
Legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the agenda. So, the motion, you have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you say aye? Public hearing, this is time and place for discussion items and already on agenda, but the time limit of three minutes each.
This, my name is Robert Zuparic, and this is regarding the back of the property and mainly the nature part of it. And I'm wondering if we could consider going ahead forming a park board, a nature park board, like a citizen board, like a tree board. And I know nothing's gonna be going on there in the near future, but I'm thinking we could start helping with, like, searching for grants, organizing volunteers, um, maybe helping with pond maintenance, um, uh, leaving, just like walnut trees growing on those lily beds, stuff like that. But mainly just starting to do preliminary planning for the nature park.
Can this all happen within the current Parks and Rec board?
I don't know.
Parks and Rec?
I don't know. I don't know who's on that board or if they're interested.
You could drop to Drayton behind you there.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, we can help Drayton with stuff in there too.
I don't know, we just need to form another board, we already have a parks board.
Brandon said they were going to form a nature park.
Well, I had said that, um, you know, Jonathan brought this up before, mainly right now the park and rec board is, a lot of it is recreation, while there is some stuff apart, most of it's recreation. However, I had mentioned, um, I didn't know if maybe, like, the tree board was like the tree and vegetation board where it expands there, um, where it's not so much about the recreation, or just forming a whole separate park board, um, you know, I don't know what nature park would be.
Right, and he.
Well, it'd be all, I mean, probably be all, I don't know if you could stop at the nature park per se.
But for all plantings and all our parks is what I had in mind.
Yeah.
Because with the park and the rec, the parks part kind of gets lost at the rec, and I understand that people that are on the board or have kids and they're interested in the rec part, so they've been always interested in the park part of it, and I'd be in favor of at least considering. And the, the problem was, do we have volunteers? Do you know if you have buy volunteers thing?
I, I know of three.
Well, that's a start, that's.
You know, that, that's my.
But you'd be in the rec.
Four.
What's that done?
I said, I think she could, he just volunteered her.
No.
That's why, you know, the, not being able to get members is part of the reason I said throwing the Parks and Rec, we already got three or four right there. If we could expand that board to, you know, back to seven members or something like that, I'd have to be nature park based. But I, you have, you make a good point about maybe you don't get buy-in from the rec interested people, you know, vice versa.
They could, they could all boards work with the park director. And, uh, I don't know if the third one was Mr. McMillan, but I talked to him this afternoon, and he said he'd be interested in.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that's your third.
Yeah, and you'd be in the rec asset for.
I just don't want to see them cross purposes, you know what I mean? Because basically a park board's a baseball, softball board.
Or recs board.
The rec side of it.
Yeah.
Technically, by how it's written, park, Parks and Rec board should be over that. But I think the vast majority, it's always been a recreation board, because until now, there's really, other than adding a piece of equipment here and there, there's really not a lot of park stuff, as they're trying to really discuss.
We plan our activities that we put on, and we talk about our sports and different things like that, but we don't really focus much on the park aspect. I mean, yeah, I take care of the parks myself, but we don't really discuss that stuff in our meetings. Um, there is times where we do, we discuss park stuffs in our meetings, but as long as the park part of the board is working with the director, so you aren't planting something more, they're gonna put a batting cage, which has happened.
Right.
And I think that it'd be great, the more people we got to volunteer in town, the better the council.
So if your volunteers are interested, we could just talk to Drayton about joining the park and rec board, or do you even have to join the board?
Do you want, you want them to join the Parks and Rec board, or do you want to create a board separately from Parks and Rec?
I think it might be simpler just to be separate, but I'm open to suggestions.
Well, I'm, you know, you. The, the nature-based focus, I mean, we have the tree board, that's certainly nature-based. If those like-minded people and the nature park, the like-minded people were together, that'd be fine, and then recreation is, the Parks and Rec board currently would maybe just become recreation or something like that. What do you, what do you think about that, if we reform tree board?
I'm assuming you're not wanting to, to be all concerned about summer baseball?
No, no.
You know, that's, that's what it, that's what the, that's what the Park and Rec board basically evolves to. That's what that becomes.
So could it be like a branch of?
Well, yeah, I, obviously I'd like to see either board take care of the other. Um, I don't know why you couldn't expand, is there a number limit on that board?
We can establish whatever we want.
We can establish there is. I know that that's the only opening, is the tree board currently is what we have open, but I, are you full?
I'm full. I've shown weeks, I mean, I've got people interested in it.
The public hearing for him next time is for upping that number already.
And the upping of that number for your benefit is recreation-based?
Yes.
Not nature-based?
No, I mean, not necessarily. Um, it's more recreation-based, I've just had people reach out and they want to get more involved in that recreation aspect of it.
You don't necessarily have to expand the board to get people involved, but, but if it's.
And my goal is, is to not always, all of our recreation, we have excellent kids recreation programs, we don't have much for anybody else.
Could create a subcommittee?
Yeah.
Underneath the Parks and Rec board?
Or a subcommittee under the tree board?
Correct.
Yeah, how do you feel about being, since you came from the tree board before, being included with the tree board?
Sure.
Because we got, we have one opening now, and we may have one or two more.
But we can always add more.
And we could always.
I mean, we can change it. Or we could, or we could put a subcommittee underneath the tree board.
Yeah, and also on all these boards, they can always have supporters of that board.
It doesn't have to necessarily be the tree board, it can be the recreation board as a committee.
You can see why.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I hate to see the, and it's not that this would happen, but if, you know, if we have a board that's recreation-minded, and we have a tree board that really only functions a couple times a year, basically, with the, with the grant cycle of the, um, Trees Forever, at least that's what it used to be.
Yeah, but those, those grants won't work for that nature park, they're pretty, um, narrow where they can put those trees.
Yeah, right, the, the Trees Forever is usually seed trees. Um, we have put trees from there in the parks before.
Yeah, but that's.
Before, maybe it's.
Maybe you have.
I, I, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see a, a nature-centric board, and the recreation-centric boards kind of try to remain separate. Maybe that's what, that's why going to the tree board would be.
I just thought tree and vegetation, or tree and nature park, or something.
Yeah, you can rename it.
That was one of the things I had mentioned to them, because the tree board, I think, like you said, they would probably, most likely want to be involved in the nature park.
Exactly.
It's kind of the same.
Like-minded.
He does.
Yeah, you were kind of saying that's gonna be a long resolve, and I guess I'm here to say, let's just do it out, because there's things we can start working on now.
Sure.
Yeah.
I think that, that's the cleanest way, I mean, you could still call it the tree board and just give them the authority of the nature park or whatever language we put in.
We always, we always did do other vegetation plantings in the park as the tree board, but that tree board has changed a lot over the years, and where we get our money and what we actually do, and what qualifies and what doesn't, so. Well, there's five on that board, but we could change it to seven, or even five, and I think there's.
There's five people on the tree board right now?
Uh, no, there's only four, and as you know, that some of them might be dropping out just because they're tired and up in the air or something, in one case. So, you want to take that on, Brandon, to think about the best way to, to work this and bring it to council?
Yeah, we may just have to do a public hearing to review the ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
For the board and up the number. I can be in contact with you if you can see how many people you want, what's reasonable.
I think the best thing to start with would be changing the name of the tree board.
Well, that'll be part of the whole.
If you want to expand that into recreation and, you know, I mean, if, if you're going to have a group of people that's going to oversee a portion of the new park, um, you know, it's not, you're gonna be in a wide variety of areas.
And I hesitate to add numbers to the board, um, unless it's, you know, unless it brings value to it, you know, I, I'd hate to just go in there and say, it's a nine-person board, and the quorum is, you know, five, five members, and you guys struggle to get five people to show up if we put all nine of them on the board, so a board of five is probably still sensible, you can get twenty people involved in the board if you want, as far as just voting members are concerned, you can keep that to a reasonable number that's going to commit and show, to showing up at the meeting, or whatever you might be doing.
So you're saying, have it separate from the tree board?
No, no, it's, it's part of the tree board.
Okay.
And if, if you've got three people that, that are, you know, feel strongly about being on this board, and the current tree board, you know, doesn't have anybody stepping down, we can add them now, but if, you know, if, if, I, I know that we struggled in the past to get people to the meetings before, we did park and rec twelve years ago, we did tree board over the last few years, um, I have been with the tree board for a few years, but, um, I just, it, it doesn't necessarily make sense to make it huge, and then everyone has to show up for the meeting, just keep it to a reasonable number of people that are very interested in this park, such as yourself and, you know, two or three others that you've got. I, yeah, I say, I wholly support at least getting you into the, a nature board of some kind, if it's what the tree board's gonna become.
Yes.
Would include what you're after.
And with that, would be a change in name, I would, I would suggest, you know? We don't want it just a park board, I don't think you want to be able to incorporate, incorporate some of that. Be just defining a little more clearly what you'd be doing, which would be more than trees, which is what the tree board uses to do, so.
I can talk to them all, and maybe have a meeting, you know, have everybody sit down and go over what they want to, what the group wants to take on and build from there. We still have the park board and rec board.
Yeah.
Together to still take over what they would not handle. So, I'll work with Drayton and, uh, these guys, and we'll figure something out, and then I'll.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Totally, yeah. I'll just plan to go to the next tree board meeting, I'll get one scheduled, and then, uh, we'll talk it out, and then just get the public hearings happening.
And if it doesn't fit, a new board is fine with me, I just love to roll it in at once we've already got.
That seems to be. What we need to do is just make it work.
Yeah.
Good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Discussion on action in reference to pay awards, should I come, come in after a conference meeting prior to the thirty?
These are just the, uh, it's a normal yearly thing to do for the, getting, trying to get the bills submitted for the end of the fiscal year.
Sorry, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, approve payments, your chair was down for completed work for downtown redevelopment grant. Uh, you'll see that in your packet, this was approved last year, the work is complete, you'll see the, the bills and submission of the payment, all construction, along with the check, official check, um, so we just need approval of the five thousand dollars. Any motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Good thing you came down, Chris.
Yeah.
It was like tinging still and Tanner saw by, and I was exhausted, I had a long day, and then all of a sudden, the light bulb went out, go, meeting, oh, so, but thank you guys.
Thank you.
Helps it out, so.
Discussion about action and reference purchasing GPS unit for water and sewer.
Uh, you'll see the, uh, paper copy, I think you also may have it on your computer as well. Um, I know this has been talked about before I took over this role, um, in the past, and, um, we do have some funds available this year, um, thanks to, uh, no other emergency-type issues that we've had to use for sewer and water, so I'll let Travis talk about it.
This is, we've been in the budget, like we said, we budgeted for this the last, probably four years, um, we finally made it through, not kind of with, without a bad water main break here, so we didn't have to expend this money. So what this does, is this machine will actually give us the capabilities to link up with our engineer too, so everything we do, they can take back and put up to our, our maps, so when we do a, a water main break, we can actually GPS where it's at, and they'll know, um, if I'm out of town and the guys need to look for water shut-off, and they don't know where it's at, this thing will get them within millimeters of it, once we program them in, so, yeah, I mean, the investments seem kind of steep, but, uh, the value of it's priceless.
So does, you be able to, um, I want to say pin, like, all the water shut-offs and for the.
Yeah.
Can you, are you, are you gonna do the water shut-offs for houses too, or?
Yeah, everything, basically every valve that we have in town, when we do a locate, we'll take this out with us, we'll get it all, all the numbers, it'll get actually uploaded into our maps too, so the future employees will have a much easier system. We also want to use it out the cemetery, um, the placards we find for the lots and blocks out there are aluminum, and even the metal ones we grow, so far, if Malus tech won't, we can go out and paint these too, and speed that process up for us too.
But we don't have those capabilities now.
No.
Especially, you know, during the winter time, I mean, you, you gotta dig through snow nights, try to find a shovel, hopefully it's right here, but, you know, danger away.
I mean, we were looking for the manhole corner, no lock, and may, know right where it is, in the summertime, you put six feet of snow on top of it, makes it kind of interesting to find.
I think it's a great idea, because I can remember way back, people saying, oh, okay, my memory is, it's right over here, and he on the other side of the street, having it, it numbers that's exact, it's priceless.
Um, I see the setup and configuration system training is at Des Moines' office, is there anybody to come here?
No, I, I said you had to go there.
You just, you go in and you come back?
Uh, the two of us go and go there, sit there, and come back. Also, um, Brian, who does most of the GPS stuff for B and K, this is the same stuff he's familiar with, so he's a tool in our toolbox, if we don't forget something or we need help, he can walk us through it.
You want?
Yeah.
Take a motion, live.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearings, and of course, following this energy report, see the energy report in there to save money. When it's sunny, we save some money, but. You know, the friends of the library, thank you, kind of cut off, let that, thank you for, uh, pledged a thousand dollars, um.
Let me know, she's coming to town. I see her down where you're brought. Let me know, she's coming to town. I see her down where you're brought. She's actually all over town, we've got a big lightsight, it's kind of.
It ain't a big-sized light, so.
She should probably go for a ride to the.
There you go, mate. Probably put her in the front seat with you. And get some people talking.
Lily will be all over.
There you go. City engineer report, Dave.
How's that?
Thank you, Donovan.
Good talk, Dave. Uh, public's word.
Uh, Brandon's gonna talk about this a little bit, but, uh, just to give you guys heads up, Ben's been working out great with us, um, but honestly, ninety percent of his time has been either watering or seeding something, so I know there was questions in the past or meetings about getting fire hydrants and other stuff painted, and we were hoping we could move that, but the way the time's flowing and us being short-staffed right now, it's, it's been kind of crunched, so I wanted to bring that to your guys' attention, just so at the end of the summer, you weren't like, hey, what all did you get done? We are, we have an itemized here, it's like Christine earned as much as fingertips you can ask for. Other than that, size trees are done with all the dangerous, or ash trees that need to be removed, minus, um, there's four of them that are still leafed out that we left. We had two, uh, two in front of a resident that says they're in the process of selling their house, and they'd like to leave the tree out, figured it'd make it work better, I don't know why, but that's what they asked for, so that's what we did.
Screw the new buyer.
Yeah, so, well, it's, it's ours, I mean, it's, it's not that, they just wanted the looks of it, they were worried about how that was gonna affect it. Um, he is gonna schedule a time crane-wise to get the ones on Jackson Street done by the mansion, and then there's one by the Pleasant household that needs to be craned out of there. Um, I know a couple trees he's taken down, were leased out, people were wondering why, it's because they were split during the drashow, and they were not healing, they were continuing to move. The weather conditions that we've had since then have not been ideal for tree health. At that point, notify, been in contact with the D and R and asked them what we could do to help, help these trees along, and they said minimize the amount of trimming, so I know a lot of people want us up trimming on trees, but that's the thing they don't want us to do right now, because they're stressed out enough, we haven't had a wet enough season for them to recover from two years ago.
What about the stumps?
What, what we're.
Are they act, are we actually gonna dry the stumps?
We have been, we have been.
Well, I just haven't noticed that.
I'm, we're just, like, repairing the spot we ground today when I talk to you, so.
Oh, there was a stump in there?
Yeah, there's.
I guess that it's a late, cut the weeds down.
So, um, with that, I want to thank the office staff, has helped us out quite a bit, running samples down to the lab for us to save our time here in town, and Drayton's been phenomenal too the last couple weeks. I know he's got his long list of stuff to do, but he's been trying to help us out everywhere he can, so I want to thank that. That's it.
As for the fire hydrants, have we, have you ever looked into a company coming in in Boston, if they know, did you know if there's anybody out there that we saw like that?
No, we've got, uh, we're gonna get the sprayer out, um, Friday, we're doing the line at the school, and then we're gonna try to transfer over and spray a couple hydrants with the sprayer to see how that works.
Is it yellow?
No, red. Some of the yellow, no, they'll be red.
You mean red or maroon?
Red.
They'll be maroon in a couple years, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Red one's good.
Try it on, see what works.
Yeah, so you're right.
Anybody else, anybody else got anything to comment?
But can't, you can't take that painting off with a high-pressure power washer?
We, we scratch them with a wire brush, they make an adapter, they can go on a skid motor, and basically it's a bunch of cables that stick out and this thing turns, but I can't find anybody to rent that, they're gladly willing to sell us that, I didn't know that.
How much is that?
How much is it? Glad, wow, this is eight months ago, and was eighty-five hundred bucks, so I don't know what the price is right now.
I don't know, I would think if you just went through with a power washer and a wire brush, you could do four an hour, not painting, but I mean, sure, clean four an hour.
Is there anything else? Parks and Rec.
Um, this is our last week of our summer ball, so we have games, makeup games going on tonight for Coach Pitch, and then their last games are Wednesday, and then T-ball, uh, last games for T-ball's third day, and that'll wrap up the summer ball season from Parks and Rec. We will start registrations for fall soccer and flag football at the end of July, and that will begin right around, um, when school's starting. We have a couple activities scheduled for August, we're gonna do our movie in the park on that Wednesday of Sauerkraut Days that we do every year, and then we did a back-to-school night last year that went really well, we had a good turnout, so we're gonna do that on August twenty-second. You guys know what our movie in the park is, but our back-to-school night's just where our kids, it's the same night that they do the back-to-school at the school, so kids just come out and, we're gonna, I think we're gonna do walking tacos this year instead of doing hot dogs, that way we can have everything.
For your movie in the park, how many weeks do you do that?
We do, how many weeks?
Yeah.
We usually do two a year, we do one outdoor and one indoor, so we did one in the library, um, in December, showed Buddy the Elf, and then we did one for Sauerkraut Days, so. Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Um, on behalf of Rob, when he came in and talked, I think that's a great idea, um, I obviously have a lot of stuff going on, so I think having a separate committee for the nature park, I think's an awesome idea, because I know that, like, Rob, Mary Ann, Becky, Anne Oakbats, people like that, I know they're very interested in that property over there, so I think bringing them together and letting them kind of figure things out is an awesome idea, and obviously I'll be there to help wherever I can, and Brandon and whoever else, but I know that they really care about that property, and I think that that would be something to definitely look into, so.
Anybody else do for current area?
For fish growing?
It might be gone.
As long as we didn't lose any. Maybe across the street. Um, I've gotten a couple complaints from, which, which you always get from Myers Metal if you stop, but, um, I don't, from past the gate to get into the white barns, um, we're not, I don't know if it can be moved closer or not, but there's weeds of, you know.
Where at?
One down past the.
The kind of fence.
Curtis just took care of all that, he had a bunch of, are you talking right outside the barn that they were just working on?
No, I'm talking, there's a fence down there, that's on the other side of the road is, and it's probably, I must say, you can't get closer to it.
Yeah, it's coming out here shortly.
Come about as close to it as I can get.
Over to the barn?
Well, to the driveway, Marty, no.
I know where you're talking, you're talking right out in front of Casper's place there, yeah, so I, I get a sense of.
I've gotten several.
If you, please, I just, if, uh, push again, go weed at the, toast on. All right, thank you.
Whenever, whenever, you know, and I just know that, because I was over always at Myers Metal a bunch, so they, feel free to talk to me.
Anybody else got anything for Drayton? Which department?
Uh, in addition to the report you have, if you get questions on that, feel free to ask, but, um, I want a couple things to put on your radar, we, City of Mount Vernon recently opened up union contracts and renegotiated wages with the police department, um, to try to remain competitive and retain people, um, and went through our structure program, so I'll be sending you the, the contract and what the finals were from that standpoint, shouldn't change anything for this final, this year, or anything from that standpoint, but, um, made some adjustments in the pay packages so that we can hopefully retain who we have and not be pirated by departments that are offering ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses and lateral transfers, um, everything else from that standpoint. Third thing I want to put on your radar, I am working with both city attorneys, Brandon and, and. Third thing I want to put on your radar, I am working with both city attorneys, Brandon and, and our city administrator over there have been involved as well. Uh, effective July first, the ATV ordinance has changed. And cities will no longer be able to charge a twenty-five dollar fee, which we're currently charging for permits. Um, and for ATV, UTVs. Golf carts are still part of that and so what, as we're trying to work through the ordinance revision is to bring that for council. Basically what we've instructed, um, city staff to do is to stop charging the twenty-five dollars for the ATV, UTVs now because their permits would be good for a week. Um, and then they're exempt from that. They do have to be, I believe, registered with the state of Iowa under the DNR registrations. Um, and then they can be operated in, in cities and stuff like that across, across the state. Um, there'd be a lot of guidelines, so it'll be important for them to know what they can and can't do. Speed limits, I think they're limited to thirty-five mile an hour. Um, city code is twenty-five mile an hour, so there's, we're gonna have to flush some of those out. Bring the ordinance back and, and basically, um, remove the ATVs from that to go from there, so.
That's effective when?
July first.
Do you know when she, I know she signed it, but do you know that they put out like a brochure or anything?
I'll send out some stuff that I've got, um, so the council's aware in case you get questions from that standpoint. Um, we just had law update three days ago, uh, been last week, Wednesday or Thursday, something like that. To where we're getting, this is what's changed, taking effect next week, so we gotta come back, reiterate that and then try to put this stuff out.
Send Christina a copy so she can.
Yeah.
Post our board and write some copies so people know.
Yeah, we'll try to get it flushed out as good as we can. We're just gonna wait for, like I said, city attorneys, both city attorneys reviewing it and trying to keep the golf cart ordinance portion of that the same. Um, as much as we can, so we can just, we can continue to permit those and let them operate as we have as well.
I think if, uh, I don't know how this created for, it might be a little, but I think originally it was a golf cart ordinance. Then when the UTVs come out, they got added.
Right.
So essentially we're going back to just a golf cart ordinance and letting the state rules and regulations apply. Uh, what was happening, why, and some of it makes sense. If you had a group from Mechanicsville that wanted to ride to Sutliffe and ride through Lisbon and then to Springville, they could potentially have to have seven or eight registrations to do that. So for a unique area like we are within four counties, it was a good thing for the people around here to have this go into effect. Uh, we do lose a little bit. The revenue's not a big thing, but a little bit of the local control per se, but um, in a sense, we're really, they're just now another, like a snowmobile or anything else you can register, um, through the state. So we'll just be back to strictly a golf cart ordinance.
And I would caution motorists to be more aware. They're going to be on the roads, um, prime, you know, probably not, hopefully not to bypass or anything, but they'll be, there's, there's not as restricted. They can operate on, on gravels and they go on the different roads, crossing.
They'll be going down some road.
So, I don't know. They could. So, I'll send out the brochure and the information I have so far as we're kind of going through this.
Can they, can they go on Highway thirty?
Nah, I don't believe so.
No, they can go up some.
Yeah. I believe, yeah, it's a secondary, that'd be a secondary.
Secondary highways.
So, yeah, so some changes there. Uh, last thing I have is a huge thank you to all of our sponsors and players and, and everything for the golf outing for our K nine. Um, it was a great day. The weather was perfect. Uh, it couldn't be any better from that standpoint. Golfing was pretty good. Um, some better than others from that standpoint, but we, I think everybody had a good time.
He looked great at you.
So, no, it was a great time and uh, we're, we're getting numbers in, but it was definitely an effective company. We're probably gonna clear it right around, hopefully five to six hours. We're still waiting for a couple of bills to come in, but should be in good shape. Well, thank you.
Anything to do with that?
Thanks, David.
You bet.
Ambulance reports in the packet, where are you? Um, one thing I just wanted to mention on the ambulance report, I don't know if you've come through it. Um, one thing that I caught my eye, um, if you see the nine-one-one primary crew calls and the backup crew calls into the missed call section, they have zero. So out of five hundred and sixty-six emergent calls, they had a crew on every single one, which is pretty incredible.
Unbelievable.
Um, for two towns, our size and our situations from where we were five, six years ago.
Five years ago.
Today, um, that's pretty, pretty remarkable. So, um, take, take your time. This is really, really informational report, so if you have time to look at it, please do. But I just wanted to make that known that I think that's pretty awesome. Um, I don't really have anything fire department related. Um, we have been, uh, working with workers comp, uh, getting everybody up to date on their physicals. I'm going to the city administrator.
Sure.
Alright. Uh, planters downtown are still two to three weeks out. Um, for those of you haven't been by, there's a lot of dirt being moved out to Sports Complex, so that looks completely different than it did a week ago. Um, I do have a timeline that I'll probably, it's off already, but I will submit this or send this out to you guys to see. Right now they have a tentative completion date of, uh, October seventeenth. So, that's gonna be all but the final baseball detail and the irrigation is obviously not a part of that. I talked to Kirk Blanks today. He's gotta go back up and get about ten to four, ten to fifteen more barn boards up in Marion. Um, he hung the doors today. The doors that he fixed, those look pretty good. Um, he's hoping to get those completed either this week or next week. Um, he is gonna be present at the next meeting to go over the barn and just tell you about what he did, answer any questions that you have. And then they'll discuss, uh, the bill, which was already approved, uh, the work that he's done, so. Any questions for that? Uh, History Center, I don't know, is Becky on?
Yep.
Becky, do you have an update on your grant? I know we were talking, potentially you would know by this meeting.
She wasn't on.
Ann, do you have any info?
I just have to push on the right button. Sorry, I've been gardening today. Um, we don't, I contacted the state office and they said they would not be releasing information about, uh, grant awards until July first. So we gotta wait till Friday and, and hope that we receive something then.
Okay. Thanks, Ian. Have a good Fourth of July.
Yeah, you too.
Um, been working into your budget stuff with Christina. Um, everything looks good there, uh, so far anyway. Um, then on nuisances and tall grass, um, had pretty good luck. I got two properties right now, or three properties right now that are pending. Getting their work complete. I gave them till the end of the week to get that done. When we help with the school? Alright, Friday, we're gonna help the school paint the lines at the parking lot. Uh, that'll, helps us, um, there's a little bit of trade in that we do to work together, but also before we go out and paint lines, we get kind of familiar with the machine. So hopefully our lines are a little straighter. Just as a reminder, we close the fourth of July and then, um, as Travis talked about with the part-time help. Um, would any of you be opposed for a month or so with whatever we have remaining, uh, getting a second potential person if we can find one to assist or somewhere else? You plan with me?
It's a good option.
I, I don't have a problem with it, but I'd like to see if we could keep them till Sauerkraut Days. Cause I mean, if these guys get just hammered with the week of Sauerkraut Days, you know, they got somebody, you know, carrying, bringing barricades down or something. You know, and it's a little of all of it. Ben's been great. I mean, he has baseball, but, um, he's been able to get his hours in and he's willing to, to basically work as much as he possibly can. Uh, baseball will be winding down here at some point here soon, but, um, I just think it would help especially with the, if we wanna get the fire hydrants done and do things like that. I mean, we have a lot of stuff going on right now and, uh, being down an employee right at the moment is difficult, so. Um, we're just kind of plugging away the best we can. So do you, do you have something for another employee? I mean, you could have both of them down there watering plants right now. No, we'll, we'll have a little plenty of, so. Ian, I think that is it. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Council reports, John.
Uh, just a reminder, Sauerkraut Days is a week later this year, August eighteenth through the twentieth. And thanks for everybody pulling together to, since we're shorthanded. And the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, we've served over a hundred kids of an estimate of a little less than two hundred, so. Uh, of course, ten of those have already graduated and when they turn five, they drop out of the program. Uh, we've still got the other half to try to get involved in this program. It's great. As far as fundraising, uh, hard to know how much we'll need for the next five years, but our goal was to get money in the bank for the next five years. I think we're at least halfway there. So, thank you, Ron. I think that's all I have.
And you said it's a week later this year, two weeks later than what's last year.
Well, hopefully.
It's first weekend last year. Uh, Rick.
Baseball is winding down and, uh, all the games that Lisbon will be involved with, they keep winning, are all here.
Yeah.
Start Saturday. So they play Bellevue, they keep winning, they play Holway and they go to state, they go to, they play at, uh, Rustell, where it's all. You get a chance to go down and watch them. It's good, um, I got a, I got a question. How long is a building permit good for?
One year. They can get an extension.
Unless it's commercial, it's eighteen months.
So, um, are we gonna get some siding on that house or?
This one down here?
Yeah.
They got an extension. Of course the county fits.
So there's nothing you can?
No. I can follow up on it and see, but I, I don't, Mike and I have been talking about it and we went down there. I wanna say was it in August it comes up, Mike?
I believe. I think so.
So.
Are you getting our extension?
No, I don't think so. I think you can get one.
You want an extension as far as I know.
Yeah.
Um, also, um, don't forget to get your fireworks and go to Mount Vernon this weekend. There's plenty over there. Have you ever thought about doing a special assignment for that? Rick Scott assignment? Yeah. You know what I mean for selling? Send somebody down there to buy them. Uh, on your cover plate? Like sixteen years old or.
Great bugger.
To the tents, you mean? Uh, yeah, the tent. We haven't talked about it.
Mike?
Nothing.
Jay? Christina?
Not at this time.
Um, Rick wrote a fireworks, just know that they are, I don't know, does Melbourne have a booth somewhere?
No.
There's a booth here in Lisbon. They are illegal to shoot off in the city of Lisbon.
And Melbourne. I know. I do.
I want everybody to still have a safe and healthy Fourth of July and you're ready to have over. Great. Andrew.